Notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 7th day of December 2018. Legal notice of the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14th, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. The first order of business is going to be the swearing-in of board members. Now, two of them have been sworn in, but I think there are other board members who are either brand-new or have been reappointed. We don't have the forms for that, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to swear you in. If you could all stand up, and then what we'll do, kind of like a naturalization ceremony, I'm going to ask you what the 17th Amendment is.
I state your name.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand.
I think this applies to me.
Okay. I, and just give your name.
I, Tim Brad.
Julie Capizoli.
Solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Okay. Captain Seeholz, one in, and then we'll have the documents to argue. We're going to move the announcements down, and the first order of business is going to be nominating committee report for chair and vice chair.
Yes, I have a report. This is Julie Capizoli. The Princeton Planning Board Nominating Committee for 2019 was Gregory Stankewitz, Louise Wilson, and Julie Capizoli on Wanda Gunning. The committee met by email on January 11th and January 12th, 2019, and decided to nominate Wanda Gunning for another term as chair and Gail Ullman to continue as vice chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Eileen, will you call Rowan?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Coen?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Stankewitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Ms. Ullman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before Wanda continues with the agenda, I've introduced most of you to a new associate with the office, but I just wanted to introduce you again. Martina Bailey. Martina, if you could raise your hand. And she started a few months ago, has been doing a terrific job, and will continue as such, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Jerry. I'm sorry, was there a comment, Tim? All right. We do have announcements tonight, and first of all, I'd like to welcome Alvin McGowan to the Planning Board. He's our newest member, and he is experienced, I believe, who's served in a number of other boards here, so we look forward to working with you. The other announcement for tonight is that we have a planner. And let me give you briefly biographical statement. The new Princeton planner is Michael La Place. He's served as the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the County of Passaic since 2007. He's a central New Jersey native and received his undergraduate and graduate degrees from George Washington University in Washington, DC. So, he started his planning career at Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission as an intern with the Montgomery County Planning Department, returned to the New York Metropolitan Area where he was selected to participate in the management training program at the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. Since his time with the Port Authority, he has served as Assistant Township Planner in Montclair, Long Range Planning Director for Gathersburg, Maryland, the Executive Director of the Downtown Westfield Corporation, that's the Business Improvement District in Westfield. He's been the Community Development Director for Plainsboro and the Director of Planning and Zoning for the City of Burlington, Vermont. He's the recipient of many awards for projects and plans, and most recently, in Passaic County, the department has received several Smart Growth Planning Awards from the American Planning Association, the New Jersey Chapter, and from New Jersey Future. So, we're looking forward to Mr. La Place starting here. I believe it's the 28th, is that correct? And it's been a long time since we had a planner, so good news for the future. I also, talking about things that are ongoing, wanted to ask Ms. Ullman if she'd give us a sort of brief report on the redevelopment ad hoc meetings and just what that group is doing.
Well, I'll try to be brief. I'm not going to rehearse the history of the Princeton Seminary's redevelopment program, because I think you've all heard it a lot of times, but because the planning board is the board that is overseeing this phase of the process, I wanted to sort of keep you up to date whether you want it to be or not. We've been busy since the beginning of January. We started on the 4th when LRK and the Ad Hoc Committee met to review all of the comments from the neighbors of the seminary that had occurred at our two meetings in early December. In reviewing all of those concerns and questions, it was pretty clear that, as I've said before, a major one had to do with the existing traffic patterns on the roads on either side of the development site, Hibben and Edghill. And in talking about it, we decided that without dealing with that, it would be very difficult to begin to sort of focus on the actual internal structure of the redevelopment. As a result, the, our engineers, our traffic consultant, Brian Stankus, the seminary's traffic consultant, who is George Jaquamar, have met a couple of times with LRK to begin sort of thrashing out the plausible ways of either restricting, containing, or in some cases, moving the traffic on those two roads. That's the process going on as we speak. In addition, the group wanted to ask the Historical Preservation Commission if some of their members would take a look at the buildings in the areas of the redevelopment site that are not part of the historical district, and let us advise the committee on whether there were issues of historical importance that we should know about before we began to redesign that part of it. Establishing efficient communication with the neighbors has been an ongoing concern. Not only is it something that we value, but it's actually one of the major principles of the redevelopment process. And I think that after some development, some problems, we've now got a handle on this. Eileen, as usual, has been at the center of getting this right. We now have a portion on the municipal planning site. It's gray, it's a square, it's down in the bottom. It has all of the major documents in full, including all of the PowerPoint presentations that LRK has made. It has the dates for upcoming meetings. It also suggests that if you want to be informed, you can join an email notification list. So hopefully, we've taken care of that. I talk mainly about the Ad Hoc Committee, because that's the group that we've appointed and run, but LRK has been obviously right at the heart of this. Jim Constantine and Chris Cosenza have been sort of constant stewards of the project and the process, coordinating the thoughts of the town, the public, the seminary, and with, I have to say, considerable tact, keeping us all focused on the project. We'll be having the next meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee, and LRK will be on February 8th at 10 o'clock. It is open to the public. If any of you are interested, please come, and if you have any questions, give me a call, and I'll be happy to explain anything I haven't been clear about here. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Ullman on this? Anyone? Okay, let's go back then to the agenda for tonight. The, part of the reorganization is the appointment of various people, so let's work our way through this. The first appointment is the Planning Board Attorney. You should have received these appointment sheets in your packet. This is for Miller, Porter, and Mueller. Are there any questions?
I'll move it.
Yes. Just a minute. Do we?
Oh, sorry.
Can we do this as a group, or?
Yes.
Okay, well, why don't we do that and be very efficient? So, the first one is the Planning Board Attorney. The next one is for the Special Counsel for the Planning Board, which is Karen Casey. The one after that is the, let's see, Planning Board Secretary, which, not surprisingly, is Eileen Couturnia. That's followed by the resolution, the two resolutions, one for special meetings and the other one is the fixed charge for meeting notices. So, if I could ask somebody to move all of those as a group?
I'm happy to move the whole pile of them.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and it was seconded by Ms. Ullman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Great. Now, we have several findings and facts and a request for professional services on the next set of things on the agenda. The first one is the findings, this is Landwin Development, and this is from October 4th of last year. And I must say that I really read this set of findings with admiration. It was a very complicated hearing and beautifully sorted out. Does anyone have any additions, corrections? Yes?
I have just one minor wording change that I'd like to suggest, if it's acceptable. Section 57, which refers to the grading plan being reworked to be more consistent with existing grading. It follows and says, "The grading plan should be revised accordingly, shall be subject to the review and approval of the Landscap Subcommittee. Individual lot grading will be performed in the future on a lot-by-lot basis, and the individual lot grading plan shall be submitted to and approved by the municipal engineer." And I would like to change the wording where it says, "Individual lot grading will be performed in the future," to say, "Individual lot grading may be revised in the future on a lot-by-lot basis," because, you know, the grading plan that we saw in the original presentation showed grading on a lot-by-lot basis, and that's really what prompted the comment or the request for regrading to be more consistent with the existing grading. So, I think the new grading plan will show lot-by-lot grading, and we can permit it to be revised in the future on a lot-by-lot basis, but I just want to make it clear that it should be provided in the updated plan.
Sure. Is that okay?
I think it's perfectly appropriate. Unless anybody has any objection, we'll make that change. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, could I have a motion?
I move the finding as amended.
Julie Capizoli, a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, the second findings and fact is the community options enterprises, this is from November 1st of last year, was a minor site plan with variances. Anybody have any additions or corrections on that? No? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Okay. Mr. Quinn moved it, did you second it?
I will second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now, we have a request for professional services. You should have received this by email.
Email, correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. This is for traffic consultant for the redevelopment plans. Any questions about this? No? This is a request from the Planning Board to the Princeton Council, so it will go. And you should have received a cover letter as well. If there are no questions or comments, would somebody like to move this?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, that brings us to tonight's hearing, which is Princeton Day School.
I'm going to recuse my, I have to recuse myself. My daughter is, one of my daughters is the Director of Admissions and Financial Aid, and Karen will be taking over.
It was withdrawn. Yes. Jerry reminded me that I should announce that the discussion on the OR2 zone has been withdrawn at this point and will not be heard tonight. So, if you're here for that...
So, which of these two is doing our?
Karen, Casey. Do this. She's a member of the, can't do it. Somebody's repaying. She can't, she can't do it. Karen, repaying herself.
to hear the application this evening.
Thank you, Karen. The planning report for this application was done by Dan Dobreminski, who's here tonight. So, I think I'm going to ask Dan if he'll go over his report for us, and then we'd like to hear from the engineer and the zoning officer on this as well.
Mr. Dobreminski, would you raise your right hand? And why don't we swear on Mr. West and Mr. Bridger as well, right now? Do you all swear affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. What's before you tonight is an amendment to the site plan and variances that were previously granted by this board for Princeton Day School. If you recall, the project had three components, the lower school, parking and circulation, tennis courts and parking, and fieldhouse and parking, to be implemented over an approximate 10-year period. The applicant now proposes to amend the fieldhouse portion of the original approval for a smaller building, 31,960 square feet, as opposed to 44,645 square feet. There also are some changes to the stormwater management. It now includes a rain garden immediately north of the parking lot in lieu of the previously approved underground storage. The amended design will retain the previously approved 87 parking stalls. The amendment offers a reduction in environmental impacts and improved site development efficiencies. The smaller fieldhouse footprint and reuse of existing parking will reduce tree clearing associated with this project. The introduction of a new rain garden will offer desirable enhanced ecological benefits, and no additional or new impacts or concerns are noted as a result of this proposal. They did note that as they developed the plans, there was a new C bulk variance that popped up related to utilities, where the water company is requiring an above-ground backflow preventer. It's a relatively new requirement of the water company, and the location that they've chosen to propose this element, which is, it's sometimes called a hot box, it actually has to be temperature-controlled, because the water is above ground at that point. And they're not insignificant, but they're not outrageously huge. They are big, bigger than they seem they should need to be. The location they chose requires a setback variance, because they chose to put it on one side of the drive near where the existing water pit is, meter pit is, rather than the other side of the road, which would be outside of the setback. And the reason they did that, in addition to being close to the meter pit, is that it would avoid more tree clearing. So, it seems like a very logical reason to do what they're doing. They have some supportive language for the variance in their addendum to the application, and I think they'll testify to that, and I agree with what they've stated in their report. There also was the sign variances. I can't, I don't recall if they were previously approved or if they're new. They're new. So, there's two new sign variances. The E4 zone is silent on signs, so they've chosen to look at other E zones for what the signage is permitted. The other zones allow one facade sign not to exceed 24 square feet, and what they've proposed are two facade-mounted signs that measure 30.07 square feet. And as I've indicated in my report, they are fitting with the architecture of the building, and I believe they will not present any nuisance concerns, and if, in fact, they're kind of necessary for wayfinding to make sure that visitors can find the building and get to the right location. So, I think also I would be supportive of the variances of further signs.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dan? Gail?
Yeah, I came across a term I've never seen before. Someone asked you to describe what a above-ground backflow preventer hot box would be, and what does it look like? I mean, I can imagine what it looks like.
If I need help from Jack.
But what does it do?
So, what happens when you have domestic water service that's connected to a large public utility, there's concern of the potential that if water flowed backwards in that system, contaminants from the opening in the facility, faucets, spigots, hose bibs connected to it, could flow backwards and contaminate the system. So, they actually put in a special type of valve that prevents backflow. So, any domestic service to a building, or even an irrigation system largely, that is connected to the domestic water utility will be required to have that. Most cases up to, more recently, in this area, even though we do get cold temperatures in the winter, they've been put underground, at least three feet underground, in order to prevent freezing in the winter. More recently, the utility company has decided that they don't want that any longer, and they want them above-ground for most larger applications, and therefore, they are requiring that the water line come in, up, out of the ground for the backflow preventer, and as you can imagine, if that occurred, the water is not heated, so it could freeze, and when it freezes, you'd have the pipes breaking. So, those boxes have to be heated.
Electric, electric current, or how are they heated?
I assume it's electric, yeah. I can't imagine they're gas, so it's got to be electric. Yeah. So, it's probably not, it's not an unbelievable amount of electric to warm that up to just keep it above freezing, because they're insulated as well. But they are rather large, they're, they'll probably describe the size of it.
How high, over the ground?
Usually, they're going to be like three or four feet high.
About six feet high.
Six feet high, sorry.
So, this is really an intrusive piece of equipment.
They vary a little bit. This one's pretty big.
Sounds terrible.
So, does this mean we're going to see a lot more of them, since it's a new requirement of the utility, this is sort of a...
I believe you are.
The shape of things to come, so to speak?
Yes, and you need to be sworn in if you're going to speak.
Yeah, we want him to speak.
I know. Mr. O'Shea, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So, for large institutions like this, some of the backflow can ever scale, this would be inside the buildings. The New Jersey American Water Company is not allowing it to be anywhere outside, so in a couple locations where I know that they are maybe familiar with is at the entrance of EPS, up at Rosedale Road, there are two boxes, silver boxes, that are exactly that. And the purpose, again, Dan is correct, is to protect the public, and there's a pressure brought in the public system that it keeps the water from flowing back into the site and so it's really a function of the sacred water act and the way that the New Jersey American citizens regulate. Before they allow us to double-check valves and have them buried, because they're not allowed us to do that, they're just actually going to push them in case.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear, did everybody hear me?
You were so conscientious to speak right into the microphone.
Yeah, we got it.
Did that answer your question?
I told the truth even when the microphone wasn't on.
Dan asked you. Did that answer your question? Adequately, yes.
I do have a couple more good questions about that. I don't understand why, since it's a valve, there's such a large storage there.
It comes, it leaks out of the ground, so it's above the ground, so it's not very wide, the box is...
It's not a tank.
It's not a tank. It's just piping and valves.
Okay. And can it be, can the power that's needed to keep the water from freezing be supplied by solar, or does it have to be electric running?
I think it has to be reliable, so, and, I mean, now's a good time to talk about it.
I was thinking about energy use.
Yeah. What you're going to hear a little bit later is, when we were before you in 2016, December, I have to look, December 8th, as part of the sustainability, we said that we would look at solar as an option for the building. We're still looking at it, but a lot more seriously, so very shortly, we'll be making a decision with that, and the solar would be roof-mounted solar, and that would be direct to the school.
Okay, I think we're still in the kind of preliminary report stage, and we've sort of crossed over into application stage. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add, Jack or Jerry?
No, I think Dan covered everything. Obviously, it's a reduction from what they had before, so there was really not a whole lot of engineering issues, some minor technical items.
And Derek, I can't see anything.
No, everything's covered, zoning, thank you.
All right. Tom, do you want to...
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Tom Letizia, attorney, representing Princeton Day School. Happy New Year to all, if I'm allowed to still say that.
Right. Okay, we, we'd like to swear you and the rest of your group in.
Okay.
Mr. Letizia, I see Mr. O'Shea and...
Mark Ray.
All right. And gentlemen, you all swear affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
So as noted by Mr. Dobremilsky, this involves the PDS campus located along Great Road, designated as Block 3501, lots 1.01, 2.01, 11 and 12, within the E4 Zone District. In December of 2016, this board granted preliminary final site plan approval, along with variances for the school to construct multiple capital improvements on its campus. And this approval also included the grant of a 10-year vesting period of protection. The improvements, as noted, were planned in three phases. The application this evening is only addressing one of the phases, which we call the fieldhouse and parking. So the current application requests an amendment to that phase, as was described by your, by your staff, mainly due to the reduction in the proposed building. The approval in 2016 was for a 44,645-square-foot building. The current application is reducing that to 31,960 square feet, thus a reduction of 12,685 square feet. However, PDS does reserve the right to come back to construct the additional 12,685 square feet at some time in the future, provided funding can be obtained. And we recognize we may have to come back with another amended site plan, depending on what changes to the site have to accommodate the additional square feet. And as noted by your staff, the other changes relate to the parking. We're gonna now be using, retaining most of the existing parking lot associated with the fieldhouse, but we will provide the total 87 parking spaces in that location as was approved in 2016. The stormwater management plan in this portion of the campus is being modified. That will include, as noted, a rain garden instead of porous pavement with underground storage. And I think you've heard enough about the backflow preventer, which does require a setback variance, and we will have testimony from Mr. O'Shea to support the, the variance for the preventer. And then finally, the two facade signs for the fieldhouse. You may recall that actually in the 2016 plans, we did show signage, but we didn't have enough information at that time, so we did not seek approval of that signage. Tonight, we are. The, the two signs, each total 30,000.07 square feet. If we apply the standards of the other educational zones...
Tom, just check your square footage.
30.07. Did I say...
You said 30,000.
30,000? Just checking if you're listening, Jack. 30,000? It's pretty big. Oh, correct, the record, 30.07 square feet of each sign. It's slightly over the 24 square feet that's permitted in the other educational zones. And we also needed a variance for a second sign. The other zones only allow one facade sign. So they, those are the two variances being solved for the signage. With the exception of those modifications, the, the plan is consistent with the prior approval and the variance relief that was granted. In terms of your professional reports, you'll hear Mr. O'Shea address the comments, but I can advise the board that with one small exception, we agree with all the recommendations. And that exception relates to the recommendation that we install the pedestrian link between the fieldhouse and the new tennis court facility, which is another phase of the master plan improvements. I believe it's paragraph six on page four of the engineering and zoning report. We would prefer to delay the construction of that link until the school is ready to build the tennis facility, because that's what's gonna create the need for the linkage. And in addition, if we construct it now, it's most likely we're gonna have to rebuild it when we build the tennis facility. So we'd like you to consider having us delay that construction until that phase is moved on. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. O'Shea, who has already been sworn. Tom?
I'm not planning on going through all these boards, but I brought them with me anyway. What I'd like to do is just remind the board of the three phases that we were granted approval for. And again, we're only seeking the approval for the amendment for the fieldhouse area. So there were three elements. One is the lower school parking and circulation off of Great Road. The property line is bounded in the orange color, and that's 102.14 acres.
Mr. O'Shea, could you identify the board so we can mark?
Yeah, this is part of the package. This is the original application, and this is overall site plan. I'll call it Exhibit A1. Great Road is to the right-hand side, and Great Road West also hugs the right-hand side. So element number one is the lower school parking and circulation plan. The second portion is the tennis, and the tennis had a relatively large parking component to it. No changes to that. And if you recall, we were improving the link from the lower school to the fieldhouse. Right now, it's along the roadway, and all it's separated with is concrete wheel stops. So the approval that we had was a guide rail separating inlet. This is the original application that was approved to you with the fieldhouse. And Exhibit A2 is the same plan, but just the new layout of the building. I'll call this Exhibit A2, and again, it's overall site plan, and this is actually part of the amended application. To remind you of the previous application, the ice rink is located in this pink color over here, Great Road West that goes out to Great Road, and we're calling this Campus Road. This is the internal campus road that works its way over to the tennis court. This is the existing fieldhouse, and the solution that we had for the parking was to have a raised parking, because the fieldhouse was being built at the same elevation of the ice rink. And if you're familiar with it, the entryway to the ice rink is elevated, and you have the series of stairs. So what we did is we did the combination of the parking and stormwater management under the parking to raise it so that we come up to that level.
Sir O'Shea, is this now E3?
This is Exhibit A3, and this is the site grading plan from the original application This is Exhibit A4. Again, it's in the package. This is the site utility plan for the fieldhouse. And what we have here is the ice rink. At the request of the staff and planning board, where we had the access coming in off of Great Road West, is now we have the internal road coming in off of here. It's in an area where we have very few trees. This is the hot box that we were talking about, so it's in the wooded area, but we agreed to screen that. So we have this access road coming in. We didn't have to do any work to the loading dock in the back, so we removed that variance. Now, what's changed is if you look at your package and you see a dashed line around the building, that was the old footprint. And what we are now doing is we're preserving the 52 parking spaces, and we're building 32. I guess, guess this was 55, and this is 32. That gets us up to the 87. The ADA handy, or the ADA spaces are located right here, and it's just a very easy sweep into the building. This building is lowered by over two feet from before, so that then meant that we had to come up with another solution for the stormwater management. And it's a very shallow rain garden. It meets township, county, and state requirements. So that's essentially the application. I just want to go through a couple of the items. I'm gonna see if I get the numbers right. So the original application, the building was 44,645 square feet. The amendment is we're at 31,960, so it's a reduction of 12,685. The original parking spaces, we had 87, we're staying 87. The existing stalls that we're keeping in the parking lot is 55, and we're building 32 new ones. We're providing four ADA parking stalls. In Dan's report and Jackson Derrick's, this is less impactful. We're not bringing all the fill-in. We're putting the rain garden in the cleared area, and we actually have a reduction in the number of trees. The impervious surface is also being reduced by about a third of an acre. Tree removal is, is reduced. We're reducing it by over 20 feet, or 20 trees. The lighting that we have in the parking lot, we're redoing the lighting. It's gonna be 13 pole-mounted lights at 20 feet in the parking lot itself, LED, and it's 47 watts per each light. Those lights will be turned off at night. In addition, we have five lower 14-foot LED lights on poles on the shoebox-style light, which light over to the walkway. That's not changing before. As far as the variances, and, and your staff really did a great job in outlining this, is originally we had the variance for the loading dock within the 75-foot setback. That's been reduced, so that's no longer being requested. We had a, and this is standard, we, we've always asked for variance for the parking stall size, nine by 19. The ordinance has been changed, nine by 18, so now we don't have a variance for that any longer. And then the C variance for the hot box at this location is, again, we're 56.2 feet off of the property line. The water line that we're connecting into is a six-inch line that serves a hydrant at this location, and that's the only function for that six-inch line. So what we're doing is we're tapping into that line, putting the hot box at this location, which is right next to the meter pit, and then we're bringing water, this, and this water is firewater, not domestic, firewater into the building for sprinklers for the ice rink and the basket, or the, the athletic center, and that the electric will come out and serve the hot box. We're asking for that variance, really because it's, it's a requirement of the Safe Drink Water, Water Act. New Jersey American Water requires it. We have a backflow preventer. If we didn't have to do anything with the water, we do have a backflow preventer in the building that serves both domestic and firewater. The four-inch service that comes into the building isn't large enough to serve both, so that four-inch becomes the domestic. We negotiated with New Jersey American. They wanted us to have the meter pit outside and a backflow preventer outside for the domestic. And we basically horse-traded. We said, let us leave it alone inside the building, and would you consider not having a backflow preventer outside? We could also put the backflow preventer for the fire, and they said, no, we'll give you the one, but we want the other. As I said before, for this type of backflow preventer, for this type of facility, they will not consider a double-check valve system, which was a system that you could bury in the ground. Again, they want access, and these systems are starting to pop up, but it's gonna be the bigger facilities, the bigger users that have them. And the whole purpose, again, as I said before, is, is when there's a pressure drop in the water line out in the street, that's what really causes the water to come back through the system and potentially contaminate the public supply. If you recall from the original application, and, and I'll just mention that, that the houses along this side of Great Road West are owned by Princeton Day School. The one house that is at the corner of Great Road and Stewart, we've met with the neighbors, and from the previous application and the plan show this, is we're putting screening in the back with some evergreens at that location. Landscaping is fully compliant with the town requirements. Actually, the new town requirements, instead of the one-to-one, it's based on the sizes of the trees, so we're meeting that standard. And Tom is right, the only, the only, I'm not gonna call it exception, but the only request that we have for the conditions is for that, that path, which would come and tie into the tennis court. We want to do that when we, when, when they build it, they'll come. So when we have the parking spaces and the tennis, that's when we want to build it, not now. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious. With such a reduction in the size of the building, I would have thought that there would be a reduction in the parking requirement. I'm curious what the rationale is for continuing to build the same number of parking spaces.
Right. Well, so, so for us, leaving this alone, this seemed to be the connector that we had. We had to come out to the road anyway. For us to add four more spaces, two on either side seemed to make sense, and leave the parking in this area, at least give you a little bit more parking.
So that size reduction only resulted in a reduction of four spaces?
It would be about four spaces, correct.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I am curious about, I applaud the revised plan. I, I think there's a lot to like about it, and I'm intrigued with the, by a retention. I'm curious about its, what size it is, and the drainage area, and whether the parking drains to there. And, and, and I'm also, so in addition to those questions that I expect you can probably answer, I'm also curious if the applicant is willing to let the town's landscape committee call the landscape architect and pepper that person with questions. Because there are, because the planting plan looks really good, I'm sure that the maintenance plan will be good because they have a great reputation, and so...
Yeah, so...
I don't want to spend your mon, you know, too much of your money on, you know, but maybe 30 minutes worth of consulting with the, or conversation, let's call it that, not consulting with...
So the landscape architect is Andrew Pogan.
Yes.
Elizabeth Hamel has been the landscape architect working on this project, and I'm sure with Princeton Day School's authorization, Elizabeth and company would be happy to speak to you about that. As far as what it's picking up, it's picking up the parking lot, and it's picking up the building rooftop.
Okay.
I'd have to scale off, I don't know offhand what the size of the basin, but we, what we tried to do is we tried to keep it really shallow.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's three feet deep, but it's three feet deep over the whole area. So, you know, it's three feet deep, but it's three feet deep over the whole area. And that's just, that's just the excavation or the earthwork that the water in that doesn't get three feet deep. It's less than that. So it's providing 80% TSS removal. It's currently being reviewed by the DEP. We had the DEP approval for the prior application. Then we had to go in for a major modification. They agree that this is less impactful. As far as outside or agency approvals for the project, we've got the modification for flood hazard. We contacted and made an application to Mercer County Planning Board. They said, "Gee, this change isn't significant. You can rely on your old permit." For Mercer County Soil Conservation District, we submitted and received, they call it a recertification. It's renewing it or tailoring it to the existing project. And knock on wood, after we get approval tonight and we get the memorialized resolution, we can go into the DNR Canal Commission. I met with the DNR Canal Commission, and we would expect to get approval within a couple months from that. So as far as the DNR Canal Commission approval is concerned, they will not act on it until they have a copy of the resolu, the memorialized resolution from the town and the county approval. Those are the two precursors. So I've already met with John Hutchinson. He knows what our schedule is. We're looking to start construction late spring, early summer. And right now, we're in line to do that. We don't have to go to Stony Brook. The increase in flow falls under the threshold that goes to Stony Brook, so we're just between the town and Princeton Soil Operating Committee.
So it's okay to reach out to Ms. Hamel?
Did you want the landscape subcommittee at Moon Park?
Yes, on behalf of the landscape subcommittee, yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Okay.
Could you perhaps go into a little more detail on the justification for the setback variance on time of the winter?
Again, it's.
We can't hear you.
Sorry.
You have to speak in the mic.
I asked Mr. Shea if he could just go into a little more detail on the planning testimony in support of the setback variance.
So again, it's dictated by the Safe Drink Water Act, as well as the rules and regulations of New Jersey American. It's at this location because we're taking down less trees, and it's by the existing water meter pit, and it's where the utility is located.
And do you see any detriment to the public by having it 52 feet or closer than 75 feet?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't. I mean, we're going to screen it, but it's also in the wooded area, so I don't think it's going to be too much of a visual obstruction. So I think it's going to be screened, so I'm comfortable with it. I wish we didn't have these things too, by the way, but it's really, we don't get the chance to choose that.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Shea?
I just, let me just go back to something you said. You anticipate starting construction fairly soon, once all these permits are. Is that for all phases or for just?
No, we're.
Just this one phase?
Just this one phase. So what we see being constructed now is the improvement of the link to the lower middle school. This is the improved link to the lower middle school. We're going to be doing that as well as the fieldhouse work. And again, as I said before, when we were before you in December of 2016, you asked us to consider sustainability. The solar, we're seriously looking at the solar, and I think we're getting contracts or proposals within the next couple of weeks for that. So that may really be fruition here, and we're looking to go for LEED certification for the property, project.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody? Staff? No?
I'd now like to call on Mr. Mark Brahany. Mark, could you just briefly remind the board your affiliation with the school?
Sure. I'm an architect and a contractor, but I'm here as a PDS board member. And the committee that I'm on has been working on these projects for more years than I care to mention. We're finally getting to, close to fruition, at least on this project. So following up on Louise's questions, and Andrew Pogan, and connecting to Andrew Pogan, we see this building as more than being just a teaching moment. We intend to use it. And I'm jumping farther ahead than I thought I would at first, but we intend to use it as a teaching tool for our students. So things like the landscape scheme that we devised will be something that we'll be talking about with the students. We'd like to share that with the community as well. And as Tom mentioned, we are going to be going for LEED certification. We had thought about going for a higher level of certification, but we're going to be going for standard certification. And we're likewise going to be using that to integrate into our teaching programs. In fact, I think our devoting resources to getting LEED certification is not inexpensive. That is one of the reasons we have pulled back on the size of the building for now, so that we can have, devote those resources instead to getting LEED certification. The architectural concept for the building is largely as it was when we first presented it and as you approved it. And I'll just walk you through the basic pieces of the concept. This large mass, not very well defined, but this large mass is our current existing ice rink. And in front of it currently is something we call the Gosnell Room. It's a low slope, low structure that's the entrance way to the hockey rink. We are adding new components around the existing pieces. This front piece will be taken off. It's not structurally sufficient to do what we need it to do, so it will be removed. But something very similar will be put back. Surrounding it will be the new squash building, that you can see here, a gable roof structure. And then on the far side will be the new fieldhouse. This is largely where we've reduced the square footage, as Tom showed in his diagrams. We've gone from two indoor courts, three indoor courts to two indoor courts. We've also taken off some support spaces that were meant to be changing rooms. But nonetheless, the concept is still the same. It's a fairly large gable roof structure. And sort of connecting all of those things will be the rebuilt Gosnell Room. It will become really what we think is the heart of this building. It'll be a tremendous PDS community facility. We expect a lot of excitement to be happening in this building with multiple sports events simultaneously. So we're very excited about what this means for our campus, and we're also excited about the sustainability piece of it. The building will have two main entrances, and you can see both of them from this axonometric. This entrance is facing the parking lot that Tom was describing, and we feel it needs to have its piece of signage so that people understand what it is they're coming to. It's also, and along with the other entrance over here, it's the way that we're trying to tune up the design of this structure. We understand that these are sort of massive pieces of building, and we want it to nonetheless create some visual interest, and we've chosen to do it at these entrance points. So the other entrance point is over here, and it faces the main campus and the other buildings on our campus. So we'll have, we'll have students and cars approaching from this vantage point, where we also feel we need to have signage. And we will have students and cars approaching from this point as well. The materials on the building are the same as what we had talked about before. We will have some sort of metal panel system for the siding on all these surfaces, and we'll have some sort of metal roof system as well. These slots are linear skylights that we're introducing into the roof of the fieldhouse. We will possibly emit the skylights at each end, partly for an economy reason, and also to allow more space for solar panels if we do go forward with a solar system. Let's see, what else should I say about this? Oh, in terms of solar, Ron Tola, who's with us tonight, has begun to contact solar vendors. And we're looking at the possibility of solar panels on this section of the existing rink and on this section of the new fieldhouse. And I think that's it. Did I miss anything?
Mark, just for the record, this is A5, and what do we call this? An isometric?
Yeah, you can call this an isometric drawing. Is this A5, or what are we up to?
I think it's A5. Is that correct?
Okay. So if there are no questions on this, I'll move to the signage drawing that I brought. There's a lot of detail on this drawing. It's probably hard to make out from where you guys are sitting. We're showing the entrance facing the parking lot in this top drawing, and its signage is shown in this drawing. And the dimensions here, I can call them out, are 10 inches tall for the lettering, and the total length of that signage is 36 feet 1 inches. And when you multiply all that out, it gives you 30.07, 30,000, an acre of signage, 30.07 square feet of signage for this sign. Likewise, for the sign that's facing the main campus, we have same dimensions for that one. It's 10 inches tall and 36 feet 1 inches long. There's a, if you have the drawing, there's a close-up detail of that signage concept over in the lower right. And I guess this is A6.
And is it your opinion that the proposed square footage for this signage is fitting for the?
I think it is. I mean, these are large buildings, and I think the signage is actually very small relative to the surface area of these structures. It's got to be large enough to see it at a distance, because people will be approaching it quite a distance.
I have no further questions for Mr. Brahany.
Anyone?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that completes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, board members, I'm going to, do we actually have an audience for this, or? Do we actually have an audience for this? I'd like to open the public portion of the meeting. And if you have something to say, would you like to come up to the podium and speak? Okay. All right, and the young woman back there is?
She's a reporter.
You're the reporter. It doesn't look like there's been a whole lot of outside interest, since you seem to have talked to all the neighbors. So hearing none, let me close the public portion. Are there any further questions or comments? Anyone? I had one question. Jack, I think this extra piece of buildable space that's being set aside from the original application, the reduction in the size of the building, and then there's a request that that, the amount that was originally approved, still be reserved for PDS. Is that right?
That's what they're asking. Obviously, they still have to come back because you can't build that square footage on the plan that's being shown tonight. I guess the only reason they're asking for that is if the town were to rezone the property and reduce the FAR. It's really just to preserve that FAR. They would have to come back with amended application.
Can we make that a condition, that they come back when they?
Yes, sure.
All right. Anybody have anything else, or would somebody like to sort of?
I would just, one other quick thought following up on the request/suggestion to have a conversation. I would be happy to, you know, bullet point the kinds of things I'm curious about, and maybe send that to Dan as our landscape architect, and then he can reach out, and we can have either schedule a conference call or have a quick email dialogue. I don't want to, you know, make a huge deal out of it, but I am curious, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to gather information from a terrific firm that's put together a pretty cool plan. So that's.
Sure.
If that works for you, then, good. Thanks. With that, I'd be delighted to move it if we're at that point.
Yes, let's see what conditions. Do you have a list of conditions, Karen?
So the applicant has indicated they will comply with the comments and recommendations in the staff memo dated December 18, 2018, with the exception of recommendation number six, which they ask, or that what they seek is that compliance be held off until they're ready to construct the tennis phase of the project. And in addition, the board would like to use Dan Dobromilsky as a conduit for landscape committee questions to the project's landscaper. And I'm not aware of, because within the staff memo, there are numerous recommendations which will become part of the resolution. So I don't think there are any other conditions unless there's something else that board members.
And the variances.
Oh, and of course, yes. But I mean, in terms of conditions on the application itself. And that, actually, Wanda, you reminded me, and that the applicant will come back if they decide they want to use the remaining square footage from the original approval. They'll come back in for an application for amended approval.
And there are the variances that are listed.
But that's part of their application, so it would be the setback variance for the proposed backflow preventer.
The lettering.
Pardon?
And the lettering.
And the lettering. And the signage.
Yeah. That's, well, that is the lettering, the signage, yeah. Okay, so that covers everything. Anybody have something else that should be in the motion? All right, Louise, now you can make a motion.
So moved.
Second. And it's been seconded by Mr. Cohen. Do you want to call a roll on that, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn. Oops, sorry. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move to adjourn. Second.